Okay, why don't we get started? Aloha Kakou, mahalo for joining us today. We will begin with a pulley by Lawrence Lasua.
Hey Pulikakou. Lord, as we gather today for our last day of meeting here on Molokai, we ask you to bless all of us who attends this meeting, especially the beneficiaries who was coming here today to give us information. And we as commissioners, Lord, we ask you to bless us so we may be able to make good decisions on the information that is shared by our beneficiaries. We also ask you to bless this area, which is Kalamauula, and that our membership here to the Kalamauula Homestead Association does well and improve the area as we have started to. And we also ask for blessings to all the commissioners for their, their hard work. And as of bringing in us getting the help that we need for our beneficiaries. We ask all of this in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, the meeting of the Oino's Commission is called to order. Okay, this meeting is being held virtually on Zoom and in person at the Kulono Evi, Allow, 600 Mauna Loa Highway, Kalamauula, Molokai, and Kali Watson, Chairman of the Commission. Today's date is Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, and the time is nine thirty-five. Leah, will you please call the room?
Commissioner Freitas by Zoom. Commissioner Kalekini by Zoom.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalepa.
Aye.
Commissioner Keneakuah.
Aye.
Commissioner Lasua.
Aye.
Commissioner Markfield by Zoom.
Ew.
Commissioner Namua by Zoom.
Yeah.
Commissioner Nevis.
Hi.
Chair Watson.
Here.
Nine members present. We have a quorum.
You already took the public. It was, we don't have any, so just the J agenda.
Okay, okay, today's agenda will begin with a public testimony, agenda items, then the J agenda. Then the commission will recess at noon for lunch and a test case deliberation will then take place. Okay, for the first testifier, DeGray Vanderbilt.
Okay, let's see.
Who said?
He is on Zoom.
Okay, Mr. DeGray, you have three minutes.
Okay.
Okay, we'll come back. Okay, we'll start with the J agenda. Yeah, yeah, let me read that. Okay, thank you for being here today to provide your valuable testimony to ensure that we can accommodate all testimonies within our allotted time. We kindly ask each of you to be concise and efficient as possible. We're going to allow the ten minutes to allow everyone the opportunity to be heard. So it, you know, out of respect for the other people as well as maybe having you guys get to the point and make, you know, focus in on what you really want to say. That'd be appreciated. Your, uh, let's see, hopefully this will be a productive and timely session. Thank, thank you for your understanding and adherence to this request. Okay, we'll start with Glenn Tevis, the Molokai Irrigation System, some dividing ag lots and Laopua.
Hello, my talk. I just want to start by saying that I've been involved with Hawaiian Homes now for forty years, both inside and outside. In nineteen eighty-one, I was hired as a county extension agent to provide technical assistance to homesteaders funded by the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. Most recently, I've been involved in the subsistence agriculture, which I think is a path of least resistance to get homesteaders on the land, and I hope that we can do more of this on all the different islands. And I also realized that the squeaky wheel gets the grease and everything else falls by the wayside, and it might take another generation to deal with that issue. With that in mind, I wanted to share some, some issues. The Molokai irrigation system is our lifeline to food production. For without water, our land is nothing. I know DOA is offering the system to DHHL. This system belongs to DHHL. It was built for homesteaders in recognition of the need for water to fulfill conditions of the Act to return Hawaiian families to the, to their ovarian roots. Homesteaders gave up their rights to build this system. Only two sources of water identified in the Hawaiian Homes Act, Waimea on Kauai and Waikoloa on Molokai. The original Molokai Water Authority was the Hawaiian Homes Commission, and this role was taken away from them by DLNR. In securing funding to bring the water from Waikoloa to Holy Hawa, the federal government stated that they couldn't fund this project unless DHHL gave up one-third of their rights to the water for non-homesetters and set aside 1,000 acres of land for non-homesetters. Uh, DHHL, DLNR constituted a transfer 1,000 acres below the airport in Holy Hawa for 350 acres in Waimea, considered an even swap. In order to assure that the loan from the Bureau of Reclamation would be repaid, they demanded that a provision of the Act be removed, and this was the provision of water free of charge. I reflect on the original homesteaders who went without water when water was available only certain days when they carried water to their animals and their crops and endured to tame these dry, hot, and windy lands. This is the legacy we live with today. Yet many homesteads are still without water, agricultural water. I estimate that over 100 agricultural homesteads are without access to water and actually checked recently, and it's way more than that. It's about 150 to 200 homesteads without agricultural water. What this does is this forces them to use more expensive domestic water, which is expensive, and we need the domestic water for domestic use. For decades, the Molokai irrigation was the cash cow generating over sixty percent of all revenues from the five irrigation systems combined. They include Lalamilo and Hamakua on the Big Island, Kahuku and Waimanalo on Oahu and Molokai. The system was mismanaged first by DLNR, then by DOA. Under DLNR, the manager was caught giving free water to Kalokoi. Also, Kalokoi Hotel was forgiven a $330,000 water bill, and Coffees of Hoi was forgiven a $150,000 bill, and it's a wonder why homesteaders want to, don't want to pay the water bill. I would recommend that DHHL seriously consider taking over the system. This system can be made self-sufficient, and I would opt for co-management with the homesteaders. Agricultural production in Holy Hawa is decreased after COVID at a time when we should be increasing food security by at least growing our own food. The second issue relates to subdividing agricultural lots. I think it's time to allow homesteaders to give a portion of their lots to their children and next of kin for many reasons. One, one is we need to outnumber everyone on this island in order to have some level of control over our future. And the second is DHHL can take credit for putting these families on the land with minimal costs if the present infrastructure, including utilities, would allow it. In the past, I opposed this because I thought it would urbanize Holy Hawa too quickly. But now I realize that under the present economic situation, the chances of a homesteader farming 35 acres is slim. We have over 130, 35-acre lots, and no one is farming even 10% of it. And we need to look at ways to increase production. If more families live next to each other, the opportunities to farm these lands will increase. The cheapest way to build new homesteads at minimal cost is to backfill on the existing homesteads, and Holy Hawa offers this opportunity. The third issue relates to DHHL creating lots by taking 35-acre lots and creating subsistence agricultural lots. For three years through COVID, I worked with DHHL Planning Department to develop this designation, and this is the most cost-effective way to get lots out to the Hawaiian families quickly. How much would it cost to produce a half-acre, one-acre lot on a 35-acre parcel? Think of it, in Wailehuli on Maui, the infrastructure cost per lot was $325,000. For less than $1 million, you can create 60-half-acre lots or 31-acre lots. If possible, this should be done east of Pupelua, which was part of the Holy Hawa plan. Uh, the idea of Molokai residents being first in the selection process is a good idea, and I know the commission is working on this. The last issue is the same issue I brought up last year, and this relates to rent with the option to buy at Laopua in West Hawaii. This is the worst product DHHL has ever come up with. Thirty-party, thirty, third-party agreements are questionable, but this is a four-party agreement that puts Hawaiian families in bondage and a lot of uncertainty. I know this because my daughter is one of them, and I just talked to her at night, last night, and she's trying to find a way of getting out of it. She said, so I rent for five year, oh, fifteen years, and then I did a mortgage for 30 years, and that's 45 years, and I'm going to be too old by, by that time. So she took my mom's place on the waitlist, and my mom was on the list for almost 40 years. The rent has gone up twice each year, and no one, including Hawaiian Homes, has any input into this agreement. The median price for a home in, in Hawaii, West Hawaii, is I got this figure, eight, eight, four, one, eight, forty-one thousand, but I saw some even higher than this, 900,000. And West Hawaii is about $100,000 higher, West Hawaii. This is a terrible agreement, which DHHL was a third party after the California Developers and HFDC. The Hawaiian families are fourth party, so you pay $1,800 a month, that's 324,000, and none of this goes to the price of the home. The big question is, what are these families in relationship to DHHL? Are they lessees or beneficiaries? And what are their rights under this scheme? And use, I use this loosely, scheme. If they're not lessees, can they apply, still apply for upcoming lot offerings? I see so many downsides to this arrangement. It's not even funny. If the renter dies and the spouse or next of kin is not 50%, they have to move out, and this has already happened. Many families have already been evicted without due process of 40 lessees through Hawaiian Homes Commission. And the other thing is you cannot pass the house to the next of kin, period. So what are these families' relationship to DHHL, and what privileges do they have compared to lessees? If they don't have a lease, they're not a lessee. The big, biggest question is, what are you going to do about this? I heard you folks are still promoting this model. Also, the time has come to have a DHHL manager to oversee West Hawaii, and you have a state office less than a mile away from Keneahali and Laopua. I know you folks budgeted for this position, and this person will definitely have a full-time job. Mahalo for this opportunity to share my thoughts, and I look forward to your questions and more importantly, your answers.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Nevis?
Yes, Chair, the, the, the rent option, you know, we talked about this last year here in Molokai, and I believe you met with Glenn, you took it sort of off. Uh, give it, and I, and I know the department has admitted that there are some problems with the rent option, and I wonder if they developed, you know, the commission hasn't heard anything, what those specific issues are and how we can fix those, because we're, we just did Laopua, we just gave more offerings out. And I'm concerned that, that we may be creating something that, as, as Glenn had said, uh, that's not going to be conducive down the road. But the decisions we make today are not just for today, but they're in perpetuity. And I just want to make sure that whatever the department has found out, that how can we get that, uh, get those issues resolved and some of the, the things that Glenn has brought up.
Sure, let me address, I guess, a few of the issues that you raised regarding that particular approach. This was approached, created, I guess, the beginning of 2000, whereby the first project was the Olima Lima Project. I think it involved about 72 units. And so, uh, the Mark Watasi's group developed the approach in consultation with myself. Uh, and the purpose, why we were looking for alternative routes to homeownership was that we were, and still, hopefully with the changes we recently made, bypassing people on the waitlist who really were sitting aside, you know, a lot of them homeless, a lot of socioeconomic problems that were plaguing our beneficiaries across the board. But the one thing that Skulio always talked about was, you know, there's these different homesteading programs, one being residential. And, you know, we can talk about ag, we can talk about pastoral, but residential, that's the biggest challenge for a lot of our beneficiaries. So in trying to come up with solutions, this was started, as I mentioned, many years ago. Uh, that particular project, Olima Lima, has gone the, through the process in the 15 years compliance to not only the insurance of a homestead lease, but more importantly, the net debt, which included outstanding balance on what was owed for the development as well as some of the tax consequences, as well as the transfer fees was included. And so that resulted, and I think, an individual or family that had been living in a house for 15 years to actually convert into homeownership, assuming the, and we use it in the Hazza Loan Program, which I think was about 1% interest, to finance the remaining debt. And so, which came to roughly around 90,000 bucks. All the equity that was generated from the sale of the tax credits, as well as the same, savings that resulted from the reduction in the debt, because there are some grant funds that were also involved, were passed on to the beneficiaries. All the infrastructure costs, which was absorbed by the department, was also excluded from that remaining debt that they assumed. And so it's, is a, not only a good way to provide homeownership to people that were 60% AMI below, but more importantly, they got to move into a house immediately without qualifying for any kind of large mortgage, which was, you know, obviously something that caused them, their failure to be able to qualify for a mortgage to be bypassed. So we used this approach, and we got little over 70 families into the homeownership arena through this rental with option of purchase process. Now, the problem with that, which was, became apparent, and it's kind of a situation you're talking about, is that during that 15-year compliance period, in order to access these tax credits, you know, if somebody were to die during that time period, there's no equity generated, because all the equity is retained by the investors that can use the write-offs, and they, during that period, are the primary owners. So that's why it's with the option to purchase, there's no, it's not a rent to own where equity is being developed or generated by the sale, or the payment of the rent. So what we did last year to eliminate that, that, you know, unfair result where if you die within that 15-year period, you get nothing. Uh, we, we changed the law, and we changed it in such a way that we're able to separate the land from the vertical construction that was being financed by these tax credits and rental housing revolving fund and bonds. And so by separating the two, we were able to not only issue, and that's what we're doing nowadays.
Yeah.
Uh, issue a homestead lease, which, you know, is something that they can now convey to their heirs rather than losing that, should they die during the 15-year period. So the separation of the land from the vertical construction is now allowed under the law that we changed. And so now we are kind of going back to the old rent with option to purchase situation, such as in Laopua, where we're changing that. We, we're going to have a workshop, I think, within a week or two weeks. We'll be going up to Laopua. We're also in the new 32-unit, Litec with option to purchase project that we're, we're in the process of choosing participants. And I may also say, you know, it is a, if, if you want to get into this project because you are a lower income, 60% AMI below, it's your choice. It's not mandatory. But it is a solution to homeownership that most people would otherwise not have in that income level. And so by changing the, you, you, you not only allow the beneficiaries, like in this case, because now they have a lease, unlike you as an applicant on the waiting list, and you're limited to heirs that are, gotta be 50% at least.
Yeah.
Now, with this change, you can transfer and name a beneficiary that's only 25% Hawaiian. So that's a major change.
Yeah.
We are gonna retract, not retro, but we're gonna change and make the adjustments and issue homestead leases to, under the old program, and make the adjustments so we eliminate this problem you're talking about. I think part of the process is gonna require us to, and we are requiring people that get these paper leases that are 60% AMI below to participate in this workshop where we'll explain these requirements, such as, oh, you know, you got to pay your rent, and they may go up, and that, these rents are set by HUD. It's not the department or the broker that's doing it. It's HUD that sets those rents. Uh, and then also, you know, the people that you're allowed to live in your homestead or your house have to be, you know, kind of approved, because you, you don't want a whole ton of over-income people living in a house that is paid for under this program. It's designed to address the needs of the poor family.
Right.
Not others. Then other things is that the annual certification is required to show that your income. Now, you can raise your income, and that doesn't disqualify you from continuing to be in the program, but you do have to get the annual certification. And then also, you need to be subject to inspection, because, you know, this investment of the tax credit syndicator investors uh, need to be managed in a proper way, which is to the benefit of the people that are living in the unit. But that particular approach, we're continuing to use it. We are kind of using it based on the makeup. And I'll give you an example, on, in our Kaulo Kahai project, we have 700 paper lessees. We got four parcels that we're developing, C, D, and F, and each one is designed to address the people on our waitlist, as the media has announced, and as we've recently done this paper lease awarded approach. So what we're doing is these 760 awardees with paper leases, now what we're doing is we're going and we're doing a quick assessment. What are their financial situation? What do they want? What can they afford? And so with this initial assessment, we're then directing these individuals to go into these different categories. Those that can afford that mortgage go into the turnkey category.
Yeah.
And so they, we have maybe six, eight different loan products that can, you know, work with Hawaii Community Lending to identify the one that fits their particular income. And then we also have the Litec with option to purchase, and as well as Habitat, as well as Owner Builder, where we just give you a lot, and then you build your own house. So the people that are 60% AMI below, they're put into this category, and they're explained this particular option. Again, it's strictly voluntary, but you got to go to the workshop to understand all these restrictions and requirements, as well as now be informed that you can still get a homestead lease. You can still get and be able to convey it to a 25% heir versus me staying on the waitlist, which that was another bad problem in the old program. So we've made these changes to address some of the issues you've talked about here. We went into the legislature, we changed the law. We're now requiring the developers. When we do an assessment of this in the Kaulo Kai and Kopea situation, an assessment, we figured out, well, you know, there's 90, say, as an example, 90 that are 60% AMI below. So if we don't use this approach, those guys would be bypassed.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, you know, the developers now are required to go in and go after all these subsidies, as well as funding, which nets and generates equity that is now transferred and given to the beneficiaries that have participated in this program. And this particular program is an excellent program, because in the Olima Lima Project, where they're paying 90,000 bucks on the remaining debt, is there anyone to buy a house like that today in Kapale? Easy, 700,000, maybe more.
Yeah.
So by doing it this way, they not only live in the house, but the, the net debt that they are now exposed to at the end of the 15-year period is only, in that case, 90,000. So it's a good program. You know, there were problems with it, so that's why we're making the changes to address some of the issues. So that's why we're making the changes, to address some of the issues you raised.
Great. I think, you know, really important to have this kind of clarification. The renters in Laopua need to understand this.
Yeah.
There's a lot of confusion up there.
Exactly.
There's really bad communication between the developer and the community. Recently, the manager got beat up by some homesteaders. So, you know, there's been some problems over there. And I think we need to make sure that communication and lines of communication, lines of authority are well-understood by these individuals. In the past, they've been really heavy-handed. They were telling them they're gonna come for inspection. If they're not home, they're still gonna go in the houses. And I brought that up to Hawaiian Homes, and they called them up and said, you're not doing that. But this kind of thing shouldn't even be happening.
I think part of why it's happening is these individuals didn't participate in a workshop. That explains these certain restrictions. So, you know, there's one thing, you know, if you participate in the program, you know, you gotta live by and abide by the rules that result in the generate of all this free money, these tax credits that are sold, which can be, and what they characterize it, recaptured. So me as an investor, environment, based on this 1982 law, participate in this program where it's to raise up these areas that, you know, are kind of challenging and housing development is, you know, kind of difficult and very expensive. The only way you're gonna do that is to have these, and that's why we're accessing this IRS law that allows us to do it, to generate and entice people to invest in this type of programs for affordable housing. Now, if that's jeopardized, because, you know, you're violating, you're paying your rent, you got all these other people in there, the investors would, you know, they'd walk away. We wouldn't be able to generate and attract those kind of investors. So there's, but if we're gonna have all these restrictions, that's why this workshop is to educate people. You don't have to participate in this program. If you don't want to live by these restrictions, wait for another program, or, you know, maybe consolidate with your kids and get them a collective income that you can maybe qualify for another type of loan on a turnkey project, or go participate in the Habitat program. But it's a good program. It's just, and, you know, it's not perfect. So we're trying to make the changes. But it is a path to homeownership that otherwise would not be available.
I understand, and I think the big problem I see is lack of communication.
Yeah, exactly.
And so, you know, if we can improve and maybe Hawaiian homes needs to understand their role in this process as well. You know, if they can send out newsletters, question-and-answer type of things, where people can understand what's going on, instead of just like rumors just floating all over the place, that would really help.
I agree with you 100%, and that's why we actually brought on somebody to kind of be responsible for that, Keone Rivera. And so he's put together a video explaining that. We also are gonna go up to Laopua to meet, maybe with your daughter, as well as others that have made, to me, complaints that need to be addressed. So we are doing that, we're also explaining with the change in this law. So now, rather than wait till the end of 15 years and run the risk of getting nothing, we're gonna kind of separate the two and give you a homestead lease right now.
Yeah, I think it's really important to have these different types of products, because we, you know, we did a survey, I don't know how long ago, and 70% of them were interested in, say, egg subsistence, because they couldn't qualify for a loan.
Yeah.
You know, so I think having that kind of product as well, you pretty much will cover all the different types of Hawaiians you're dealing with.
Yeah, and we're not limited to a single-family residential. We're doing the townhouses on Kauai. We're also doing the Bola Drome, the 23-story, 278 condo, along with townhouses in Moilili, in central Honolulu. And so, that's the other thing. We're trying to be a little bit more innovative, especially like on Oahu. That's 4% of our land, we've got a little over 8,000 acres. We got 29,000 people. For Oahu, we got 11,500 on the residential waitlist. So, you know, just doing single-family residential ain't gonna do it. So we gotta get, we gotta go up, we gotta go density. I mean, it's kind of nice, you know, especially on the 22nd floor, looking out at Diamond Head, in a good location, I think I could handle that.
Well, I think the other thing too is, I think 20% of your land's on Oahu, it's the Waimanau cliffs. And we gotta do something and do some swaps.
We're doing something on that.
You know, because unless you want Hawaiians to live in caves in the mountain, you know, I mean, that's 20% of Oahu land, that's unreal, so.
Caves, never thought about it.
Tunnels, tunnels. Don't give them any ideas.
You buffer it up and put some fencing maybe.
Thank you, you know, I realize the importance of different products, and some people just want a house. They don't want a yard, they don't want, you know, especially kupuna.
Kupuna, yeah, for sure.
Comfortable, so I understand that. The other issue is, what is your thoughts on the Moloka irrigation system?
You know, I like your suggestion. We actually have been in discussions with the DOA, and they seem receptive to turning over the thing to us. And, you know, when I look at the disparity in charges, ag versus residential or personal用水, yeah, that's something we gotta address. And, you know, I was looking and kind of questioning, you know, why is it $40,000 per month in electrical charges? Why don't you guys put up a PV system or, you know, kind of run it better?
In 1987, I told them, why don't you run the pumps only at night? They said, oh, that's a good idea. You save $7,000 in one month. And I'm not getting paid to tell them that, you know, so just ignorance.
That's why Glenn, we might need you as a consultant to give us some guidance there, guy. Appreciate your input. But all the things you raise are great. I am seriously looking at taking over the MIS, because I think they're not running it right, and they sound receptive to it. So, you know, we, I know Oahu has talked about maybe partnering and throwing some money on the deal. So, you know, there's different things we want to do. I do want to, well, there's a lot of things we want to do. So anyway, but getting back to your concerns and comments. Any other questions for Mr. Tevis?
Oh, you got some. I just had a couple of comments on some of his other items.
Sure.
On the Moloka irrigation system, I'm in support of that. You know, Hawaiians say, "Ola ikavai," water is life. So that's important. If we could get control of that, we, you know, I got a tour, Lawrence gave me a tour of, I haven't had that tour, but through all the land that we have, and we don't have the water. And I support your second issue about subdividing agriculture lots. In Kauai, we have 46 farm lots, and we have one farmer. We have people sitting on 16 acres. And our water bill can be controlled by the amount of people that we have doing water.
Yeah.
So we take that land back, you have a house, give you your two acres. The other 16, 15 acres, we gotta divide that up and give it to people. More people we put on the water bill, we lower our rates.
Right.
So we've got to get, we've got to do that. We've got to be smart about what we're doing. And like you say, increase our population, that's how we do it.
Yep.
So, that was my comments. Thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
Commissioner Halepa.
I want to reflect the same thing. You know, I made some notes here. I really think that Hawaiian homes should take over the water to support Holy Hua. One of the questions, and you might be able to answer this, is, what is the annual cost to run the system? Do you know?
The major cost is electricity. So, you know, we got the highest electricity, well, other than Lanai, we got the highest electricity. So you gotta be innovative. In the late 80s, we did a study of running a turbine in the water line that goes down to the reservoir. So that's one option. We didn't look at, there was another idea, we have been floating panels on the reservoir. So there's all kinds of innovations that can really help us create electric. Once you get the electric built on, and see, the other part is, there's between half a million and a million pounds of tilapia in the reservoir, clogging up the water. And so the farmers wanted to go in, and he said, no, you cannot, liability. So if we went in there and we fished them out, free fertilizer. You know, so I think we need, I mean, we gotta just use our head, that's all. I mean, we cannot, we cannot get into, oh, you guys, you know, I mean, I used to think that the state of Hawaii, the answer to any question is no. That's the starting point. So we gotta get beyond the no, and how are we gonna do that? And if we don't get control of this system, we're gonna continue to deal with ineptness. In 2004, the West End didn't have water, their pumps went down. And they told the homesteaders to cut back 50%. All the farmers cut back 50, they lost 50% of their crop, okay? And that is never supposed to happen, because they're supposed to put in their water, then take out their water, don't go take out our water.
Yeah.
So this is the kind of situations that were going on. And I pounding Sharon right now. And now she's saying, oh Glenn, I will give them to them. I said, you better give them to them. So I'm willing to assist. I think if we had a good community involvement, we can even do like how they're doing up the Big Island, where they're managing some of the water, one of the water systems. We can do some co-management that makes it a little bit easier. You guys can take over the employees to look at the total water system on the island. You know, and I think that's important, because we gotta get these people growing food off the domestic line.
Yeah.
That water is too precious. We need to use that water for drinking water.
Yeah, what I'm thinking is, over the next year, there's a bunch of things we're trying to do, you know, I was talking to Lawrence about maybe identifying lands that are more conducive to grazing, rather than the 9,000 acres that Livestock Association is using. They only can use 3,000, because, you know, not much rain, I guess. So they're limited, as well as the fencing. Fencing, very expensive, they need monies to maybe fence more. So one of the things we are looking to do is work with, not necessarily work, but acquire lands that the DLNR has, that might be a lot more productive. We're also trying to, and we are developing a working relationship with commitment schools. They have lands over here that might be a little bit more productive. So if we can maybe look at the feedstock, and maybe the use of some of these lands that are just sitting idle to raise, you know, the grasses needed for the cattle. And talking to Dennis, you know, with the Livestock Association, there's a real, I guess, synergy in trying to, not only identify cattle, but do it in a way that feeds the community, as well as the schools, but also beyond that. And so it's at a different level. And so that's the way we gotta think. And I think one of them includes taking over the MIS.
Yeah, okay. Well, you know, one of the issues with raising cattle is, it's really hard to raise cattle when you get the deer eating all the food. So deer control needs to be part of pasture management. Because Moloka Ranch, I saw drove Moloka Ranch out of business. The cattle, the deer were eating all the feed, they couldn't manage the pastures. So that needs to be part of it, and we still.
Yeah, the higher fences, from what I was told.
Eight-foot fences, yeah.
Yeah, so we need to take a look at how we maybe can get some funding for that. Looking at our Firewise funding that we might be receiving, maybe we can access some of that. Work with DOA, work with the feds, real development, all these others. But we need to have the participation of our beneficiaries. You know, guys that don't want to use the land sitting, and the guys that had money, as well as fencing, and decided, oh, you know, they didn't do it. We gotta look at the active players, and then those that are not active, put them to task. If you're not gonna use it, give it up, so.
I just wanted to add one thing. In 2023, I was appointed to the USDA tribal advisory by Senator Schatz. So I'm involved in USDA programs, and
Oh, great.
it all comes down to Hawaiian homes. So I need to maybe meet with somebody who can be in between to look at what programs are important for Hawaiian homes.
Probably Mike Chan, I'll send you his contact.
Okay.
David Chan.
I'm in touch.
Yeah, talk to him, he's, we got him up in DC, we're working that angle.
He just contacted me yesterday.
Okay, good.
Okay.
I have one more question. You know, this idea about subdividing egg lots?
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea, because when, for a couple of reasons. One is that I don't think that everybody has the time to farm, and taking care of one acre is, that's a lot. And to see these lots that are three acres or two acres, I think subdividing, being able to put more people on the land and giving them the opportunity to afford or build something that they can afford to build on their own and not be tied to some type of home loan is the way to go for a lot of people. And I think this is something that we need to look at from the department to help support all levels of our people.
No, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Because I think, you know, when you have family living next to each other, they are gonna be helping each other.
Yeah.
You know, whether it's be growing food, raising animals and everything. So you're creating a critical mass of individuals in each family that's gonna help on the homestead.
Yeah, yeah.
Lawrence, you had any comments?
Nope.
Anybody on the web here, Makai or Mike?
Yes, real quick, I'll jump in. Uncle Glenn, as always, thank you for Manao. Great points, well-thought-out, well-delivered. I also want to say, big mahalo to staff and as well as your chair for setting up this workshop meeting with Laopua. There's a lot of issues that are a direct result of lack of communication and miscommunication. So I just wanted to say thank you guys for that. Glenn, definitely agree with you on the Moloka irrigation system ideas and subdividing egg lots as well too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Pauline?
Yes, Pauline, thank you. I want to say that, Mr. Tevis, that your testimony is an excellent way of giving us a heads-up of things that are very important to Moloka'i. And I'm, Mr. Chair, I'm very pleased that you're explaining about Laopua and the rent-to-own option, because that has been something that we have heard in the past. But your explanation is very clear, and I hope that helps our beneficiaries. But I support everything that Mr. Tevis has written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Commissioner Namaul. Tell Clyde I said, "How's it?"
Okay, thank you. Next person up, Walter Riddy.
Hello, everyone. This is very unusual for me. Usually, I'm up here supporting the MIS and all the different issues. But at this point, for the first time, I'm hearing a personal problem that I have that I need to try and resolve. I'm here to ask for reconsolidation of the lot that I have. It's called Lot 69E. So it was voluntarily subdivided, so one of our aunties could have part of the lot. And it was subdivided into a three-acre lot and then a six-acre lot. So Auntie decided to go back to the Big Island, and the lot has been separated all of these years. So I decided to grow a food forest on my three acres, because the portion that I had was on the hillside. So I'm here today to ask for the possibility of having Lot 69 So I wanted to show some of you some of the things that we're doing on the three acres. And the other problem we have is that one of the very few historic sites on the island, not on Moloka'i, but on Hawaiian homelands, up in Holy Hua, is part of this lot. So I'm really concerned about the historic site, and I really would like to start farming after all of these years. Growing trees is okay, but I wanted to grow some vauke, some olona, and some food on the bottom section of the lot. And I cannot do that unless we consolidate the lot. So I wanted to pass out to all of you some pictures of the historic site. So I wanted to pass out to all of you um, some pictures of the historic site. So you can take a look at all the lines. And then some pictures of the the food forest that we've ruined, all of the different plants. So recently, we um, we joined forces with the department. And we said, we need we need to clean the historic site. So I put up eight hundred dollars for some equipment and they brought some of their equipment and we started clearing all of the lantana and Christmas berries and all kinds of stuff and shipping them. So I wanted to pass proof that you can work with the department and its employees and we I thought we did a really good job in clearing the site. Not very many people understand the site that I'm talking about. Um, I'm reading from Molokai site survey by Catherine Summers, which is like a bible for us here on Molokai, all historic sites that we have on Molokai. So just for your information, um, this beautiful girl was visited each night by a lover who left before daylight. She was unable to discover who he was. This suspense told on her. And she began to waste away. A priest consulted by her parents advised the girl to attach a piece of white tapa to a wart on her lover's back. In the morning, shreds of tapa helped to trace the demigod lover to the hill, Huu Pe'elua in the middle of Ho'olehua. This Kahuna priest and friends of the family found a large Pe'elua caterpillar asleep on the hill. The Kahuna ordered the people to collect wood, which was placed around the sleeping Pe'elua. And a fire was lit. As the heat of the fire increased, the caterpillar burst into myriads of small caterpillars which were scattered over the plain that accounts for the army worm best called Pe'elua. So this is a story that goes with the site um, that is on Hawaiian homelands. So basically, um, I'm trying to work with with the department so that we can properly take care of the site. And I'm willing to do that. That's like something I would love to do. And I also would love to be able to raise food instead of just trees on on my site. So I would like to have a positive um, reconsolidation of Lot sixty-nine E. Mahalo.
Uh, can I ask you a question? Um, I I guess way back, uh, the thing was uh, and requested to be authorized, the family uh, to subdivide it and I guess you got one portion and another family who has since passed away. The one that passed away, that's, they they don't have any remaining family members that might be interested?
I I don't know. Um, I know that she gave up the lot and went to another lot and then moved to the Big Island. So I don't know what what happened to her or her.
Yeah, see, you know, um, and and the the your requests uh, kinda makes sense, but it also makes sense, uh, you know, you obviously maybe have other family members that might want their own lot. So the process of subdividing is pretty involved and costly. So, I mean, I think the commission, if they wanted to, they they could reconsolidate if they wanted to. But I guess my question to you would be, uh, would there be another family member that might wanna put a house on that particular lot? For a separate family that might be related to you or whatever? And not have to go through this subdivision process that's already been done? You see what I'm saying? Is there, rather than just consolidating, giving it to you, is there like another family member or family that might wanna take advantage of um, the use of that vacant portion?
Yeah, I'm I'm opening open to all kinds of possibilities. Um, I'm not gonna be around much longer, so you know, I got all my sons and daughters and.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah.
So, and I don't understand all of the options.
Well, because it's subdivided, uh, that subdivided piece, you can go in for a loan. If you consolidate, then you're kind of restricted to what you could put on there. You already have it subdivided and the benefit of this separate lot that you can now put a house on and all kind of other good things. If you were to consolidate it, you might lose that option or you would lose that option. So do you really wanna give that up?
Yeah, I need to.
That's your call. You figure, you wanna think about it and then.
Think about it. I'm open to options, so.
Yeah, sure. We're we're, the commission is very flexible and reasonable, so I'm sure we can go with the suggestion that makes sense to not only you, but maybe somebody on the waitlist too. That might be your your son, I don't know, you know, so. Okay, so any anything else, Walter? Or any questions, commissioners?
I just have a question.
Commissioner Nevis?
So I guess, um, since the, it it looks like the department paid for the subdivision, is that correct?
I'm not sure.
Originally, we're not sure. But but once you subdivide now, that's a separate lot, so we need to determine who that, who owned that lot, whether they have errors and whether that lot's putting back into into inventory. Uh, you know, I'm I'm not, after our first presentation today, I'm not gonna say we don't want people farming. We really want people farming, but it's gonna be a question of the legality of that lot. What do we do with it? And I think Juan would be probably the best one to to find out where that's at and then go from there. Thank you, Jerome.
Okay, any other questions? Any other comments, Walter? You good?
We need, we need the MIS.
Okay. I think so too.
It's so critical.
So can you uh, be a part of our advisory group that maybe give us some guidance on that?
Oh, definitely, the the history of that.
Not only the history, but how we move forward.
Yeah.
And the use of it.
Right, but you also, yeah, definitely, definitely.
Okay. No, I'm serious. We we will take steps. I'm thinking in the coming year, we figure it out. Figure out the financing and how to operate it, the revenue stream, the cost of maintenance, how we can fix that and all all the basic operational uh, issues that we need to address as well as uh, retention of some of the employees that are running it. Because that was my concern, once we get it and if we don't have any staff to run it, then that's, you know, gonna be, that's not gonna be a good situation.
Yeah, there there's like huge pipes, people making electricity in those pipes too, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of of options.
Hmm, okay, good. Okay, thanks, Walter. Okay, the next uh, testifier, Liko Wallace. We got in Naeva and Kalaniana Oleha.
Aloha and good morning. Hey, there were a lot of questions that were answered last night. But I still needed to bring it before the commission. So I had recently talked to um, Mr. Robert Ng in regards to the infrastructure and where we were at. He had um, informed me that there was a contract drawn up in June twenty twenty-four with Goodfellows. Um, but what is holding everything up right now is there is um, a large lot. It is um, Lot forty-six, which entails forty-two acres, which is kind of the holdoff right now, we're continuing on with the infrastructure because it needs to be from my understanding, some kind of quick claim um, between between DLNR and DHHL so that they can make the subdivide the lots to be included with the infrastructure. Which would then total, which currently is fifty-nine lots, but with those, he said it would be sixty-six lots. So the legislature appropriated twenty-nine, just over twenty-nine million to do the roads, the drainage, the portable portable water and the MIS lines. But because of the price of the the road would take it over that amount that was allocated initially, they downgraded it to an ag standard um, road according to the county um, regulations. Initially, when we, I was talking story with DHHL on the um, initial infrastructure, we were looking at ag lot, um, ag roads. But I guess in the planning of it, they had increased it to a paved road. But because of the monies that was allocated, they had to back down to ag standard lots, um, road. So one of my questions is, I don't know what needs to be done to initiate the that Lot forty-six to be divided so that the infrastructure can be done. From my understanding, um, Goodfellows have already um, brought in their equipment and are staging their equipment on one of the lots, Lot twenty-two, and just waiting for approval to start. And one of the lessies on Naeva in general had asked if it would, they would consider doing underground electrical instead of overhead because in that area is very windy and it would be um, prone to fires. The recent fire that we had down there was in that area. The lot that I am the lessie to is Lot one fifty-one B, which is one of the older lots uh, adjacent to the main highway. So I'm not part of the subdivision, but um, because I'm one of the older lots that is in the corner, I do not have electric. I do not have ag water. And um, I wanted to be able to work with DHHL to be able to be connected with the subdivision to bring electric into my lot and the ag. Um, I had applied for the MIS in twenty seventeen and it took five years because they never had form. So I could never meet with them to see what I needed and there was just so much talk um, that in twenty nineteen, I um, lost my husband. So I had to take on the burden myself to find out what I needed to do to be able to bring the ag water into my lot. Um, to do that, I had to fol- follow the regulations that the MIS had. And that cost me well over ten thousand dollars to bring the ag water into my lot. A lot of the other um, homestead lots, because they were connected with the the pineapple field, they had those, um, I forget what they're called. Those um, pipes that they could easily connect to, but because mines was not connected, um, I did not have a connection. I had to buy all the all the necessary um, equipment. I had to um, hire someone to dig. I had to do all that myself. And one of the concerns that I had in regards to the MIS is that when I was talking that um, Lot forty-six with the forty-two acres, it sounded like some of the lots will not be five acres. And from my understanding with MIS, you need to be five acres to qualify for MIS water. So that might be a situation where either that route needs to change or um, they need to um, figure out how they're gonna subdivide it. Also, another problem with the the divide, the the lot is that um, we had to dig twice because there was no clear maps of the MIS lines. So we was just going by word of mouth of where it was and um, we missed it the first time we dug. And then finding out that the lines are not metal, so we couldn't find it with a metal detector. It was made out of that um, as that concrete type of pipe from older days. And the sad thing is that because we had to do our own digging, if we made any um, if we had an accident and we broke the pipe, we would have been responsible for anybody that was downside of us to be able to repair the pipe. And so it it put a really heavy financial burden on us for that. And again, like, I'm not part of Naeva subdivision, but I am part of the older subdivision. And so there's a lot of stuffs I had to do myself. And then lastly, um, we just, I just wanted to um, talk about Kalaniana Oleha, which I know in past years, there was a lot of money that was poured into um, restoring it for usage. And I think it opened the doors maybe a year at the most. And then the doors were closed, I think it was in twenty sixteen. And for no apparent reason, nothing was explained to anybody why it wasn't usable anymore. And that is one of the places where our people can use to have um, community functions and you know, a lot of us were kids when we had parties that we remember by, so um, I'm just opening the door to seeing what DHHL has um, in store for repairing Kalaniana Oleha.
Any questions? Uh, Chair, I just have a a concern. If 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 there's staging equipment, that means we probably have the contract moving ahead. And I think this quit claim is gonna be important to get that done as soon as possible. So we don't get fines for delaying their their uh, their work, yeah. So I think that's something we need to look into right away on this quit claim, if that's, if that is the issue.
Yeah, I'm I'm kinda concerned with the uh, I I think part of the whole of it's uh, permits. Right, and uh, unfortunately, the county DPP is uh, I guess understaffed and just slow. So we did bring on somebody to consider uh, us issuing permits. And so we've done it on our Yorkshire development, uh, we're um, kinda fixed up this uh, dormitory and created a homeless shelter for our beneficiaries on the waitlist. This, with the various staffs that are tariffs that are starting to kick in, our um, costs are going up tremendously. And so I I think we might have to assert our uh, legal authority to issue our own permits and move along. Because I I, we can't wait for the, that's not happening anymore. So this is a particular situation, because with Naeva, you know, that's that's all Hawaiian homeland and we're not really connecting to anything that uh, might be adversely impacted other than maybe the MIS, MIS, which we hopefully will be taking over. So um, we're gonna try and get that uh, project moving along a lot quicker. Um, and we we might be taking different approaches that uh, this administration previously have has not done. And so I I think we gotta get aggressive and uh, we we will. Because um, you know, not only will it benefit you if we um, moving along, but more importantly, the people that are. Moving along, but more importantly, the people that are have been waiting since.
Eighty six.
Eighty six, that's nuts. The costs, I mean, we're looking at about thirty million now.
Yeah.
Do all the improvements, pivoting and going to ag standards, I think has become necessary. Now, underground lines, that's very unlikely, sorry.
Yeah, and hopefully there is more money that would be allocated that way because. For starters, with the infrastructure, I can understand doing the ag roads. But that place gets really muddy and. It's really hard to navigate within that area. I mean, I don't know, once they do the infrastructure, if if. You know, things going change, but that whole place is slip sliding when it's heavy pores. And they're inland, so they would get stuck. I don't know how ag roads would handle, I'm not sure.
Well, even with the ag roads, we're still addressing the drainage issue. And the infrastructure will. Well, I mean, we're facing the same situation with some of our other project sites, especially like in Anahola. Where we're putting in a kind of like an ag road or upper Anahola. And my concern was the drainage and so we we will be addressing the drainage. I mean, that's why we have civil engineers to kind of address those issues.
Great.
Okay, the next person up. Malie Ridi Kamara. There's a bunch of you. Ho'olehua Homestead Association.
Aloha, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Malie Riti Kamara and I'm here. To address the board with my concerns. My husband is a beneficiary on the Ho'olehua waitlist and the Maui residential waitlist. I'm here today with a heavy heart compelled to share my deep concern and frustration regarding the wait times we, the applicants of Molokai. Continue to endure far ancestral lands. My father-in-law applied in nineteen seventy two Alexander Kapahi Puaa senior and died on the waitlist in two thousand fourteen. My husband Scott Puaa was his successor and because he died, he wasn't awarded a lease, my husband had to prove fifty percent for the second time to take his place on the list. We went into the Molokai office several times for many years after his death because they called us, told us the successor to come in. And do the paperwork to take his place on the list. We were. For many years, went to several times into the office and got absolutely nowhere. No help from the Molokai office. You know how depressing that is to go into the office and only to be turned away saying, oh, go home, do more research. Okay, very devastating for me and my family, put a toll on us for many years. The same time, the same thing every time, go home, do do some more research, we pretty much gave up. Then a couple of years ago, the Oahu office calls us up and asks if we are still interested in our spot. We said, yes, we are interested, but didn't get nowhere with the Molokai office for many years after his death. So she told us, send us everything you have, I did, and the next day she called us and told us, we got him at fifty, he's taking the dad's place on the list. So I was happy and accepted, however, there was a discrepancy and a problem in the blood quantum. So what is the process and how do I go about dealing with the situation of a father having a kid with a with a daughter? And then her not not being able to prove that. They gave my husband the wrong amount of Hawaiian, they went by the part Hawaiian guy on. His grandmother's birth certificate and it got changed to part Hawaiian nine years after the child was born. We went in circles last night talking with a couple of them saying, oh, well, we can't do nothing about it, we have to go by the current person on the birth certificate, that ain't the dad. That ain't the dad, so so how do I move forward from there? Because they gave my my husband the amount from the part Hawaiian guy, now my kids are short. If they gave the Hawaiian that that grandma was born with, my kids would have fifty percent. So now if something happens to Scott and we got to prove fifty percent for the third time, my kids can't. So to me, having who can prove fifty percent for three generations already? You know, the dad fifty percent one time, Scott proved fifty percent. Now if something happens to him and we're on the waitlist, then we got to prove fifty percent for the third time. How is that fair and what is gonna be done if something does happen to my husband and then we lose out completely? From nineteen seventy two to now, you know, being in jeopardy of completely does not sit well with me. And I can do everything I can for them, I have six children of my own. And we need a lot to live on and we are number, I believe, fourteen on the Ho'olehua ag list and we are two thousand. Maui residential from the Dowling Company or whatever, stating that there were these programs on Maui. So I was like, oh, yeah, we're number two thousand something, nowhere in chance we ever going get there, but I seen a meeting in January, I watched the recording and it said to. Turn in an interest and a pre-qualification if we're interested in a spot. I did and we were pre-qualified for a house at Pu'ohona, but there's no way I could. Uproot my family, find a new job and leave and move over there in in a few months. So we passed the opportunity of lot selection because it was just too quick moving for us and we couldn't get there. So I qualified to the Nahaza program and when I spoke with the lady at Nahaza, she told me that. If I do have a lease here on Molokai, I can use my Nahaza for here, for Molokai. So. I'm just concerned about the Ho'olehua waitlist and what is happening. For that and how long it would take for those lands to be awarded. And is the Naeva all awarded? Is there any extra in there? Is the Naeva connected to the Ho'olehua ag list? When will those lots be available? What's the holdup from the scattered lots in Ho'olehua? You know. It doesn't make a difference to me if get electric or not because we're living off the grid anyway right now because the lot that we're on in Ho'olehua. Cannot have electric because we are in line with a short runway, so we've been living off the grid, roughing it for over twenty years, my 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 parents. I just been up there for seven years now, living off the grid with my six children. But the problem is, we have many families squishing up on lots. We have no ag water on the lot, we was growing food, growing all kinds of stuff for our family, but then the water bill issue came about. So we stopped farming altogether because everybody grumbling about the water bill, everybody's sharing that one bill with one meter. And we are dealing with a tier system. And because there's many people on that one lot using up the water, we are paying the highest tier from the get-go. So we quit farming already over there because it's cost too much and the ag water. That we once had, my mom then applied for a grant many years ago. Got a grant for the ag line, didn't even use the ag water yet. The lines were run over by the sandwich aisle trucks, created a three thousand dollar bill, they shut that off and we never used the water ever. And so we don't have access to the ag water and we can't afford to farm with farm with the regular water. So we really wanna farm, my my kids wanna farm and we're just waiting for one one Ho'olehua ag list right now. One one ag lot. So my question is, what can be done to ensure that my family will not lose out the opportunity? Of gaining a Hawaiian homestead lot like everyone else? So if something happens from now until the time of awarding for that Ho'olehua ag list, if something happens to my husband and my kids can't prove fifty, then what do we do? We just lose out?
Well, it sounds like you have a pretty complicated situation, especially with that. I guess the child that was born. Because of an inappropriate relationship.
Yeah, how can I move forward with that? Like, there's nobody alive to even say anything, the the mom, Scott's mom told us before she died. That the real, that's not the father on the on the birth certificate, obviously, because it's changed nine years later. The father, the father is the mother's dad. So like, you know, now my kids lose out because they exactly half. If they went by her being a full Hawaiian, my kids would have exactly half. I cannot even apply, I don't even have.
Well, let's, you know, I I don't know what the answer is, obviously. You know, the establishing that situation, which will better position your kids to qualify. I don't know, maybe that's an affidavit situation, I'm not sure. I think it would probably be something that the commission would have to take up and approve.
I mean, it says got changed from Hawaiian to part Hawaiian and knowing that that's not even the guys you guys researching on that side, oh, we go back for generations, well, that's not even the people that you guys should be researching, it's the mother's. Father that had the child with her. And no discrepancy on the mother's side.
Right, right. Okay, well, let us take a look at that, one can maybe collect information and then. The other quicker approach, you were saying that you're on the waitlist for Kauai for ag.
Oh, no, Ho'olehua.
Ho'olehua.
Yeah, we're number fourteen on the list.
Right, but then doesn't with your husband or the father, your kids, he's on the waitlist on.
Yes, on Ho'olehua. He took the the father's place on the list.
Right, but how are you kind of considering the Pu'ohona, that's the.
Oh, because the residential is on Maui, the dad's residential is on Maui.
Okay.
So then the ag is on Ho'olehua.
Yeah, because we're gonna be doing over twelve hundred, we got like five, six different projects going over there, so that definitely will be moving forward. You know, in order to preserve. That connection, even if with this discrepancy, if they're less than fifty percent. But once the father gets the award, then. They will definitely be able to succeed to that. Homestead lease, so I would strongly recommend that, and I really take a look, educate yourself or him, educate himself. About all the different choices, we are, we are gonna have quite a few activities for. What do you call it? Maui regarding awards.
Well, I'd rather get one lot here because this is where I'm born and this is where I was raised and this is where I have my job.
So your your kids do are able to succeed to your lease?
No, we, that lease that we're on in Ho'olehua is my dad's.
Your dad's.
And so that's my dad's lease, but there's too much of us there. And we cannot, we can't be successful and farm and grow our own food on on that lot. Using that regular drinking water because the water bill is too expensive, we get all of us sharing one meter. The bill is is high because of the tier system, we're using the the highest tier from the beginning because of the number of people.
Well, that's one reason why we're looking at taking over the MIS to maybe address that issue regarding the charges. For ag use of the water.
So we're on my my dad's lot right now, but I'm fighting for my husband's. Spot on the list. And you know, it's so sad that both of us have great grandparents, that was the first, the first homesteaders at Kalamaula.
So who has, who's the heir right now to your dad's? I know you live in.
Well, all all of us, we have nine of us, nine of us.
Nine of you.
Sister get four, I get six, you know, it's just too much, we need our own lot.
So your dad is still alive or?
Nope.
He passed away, so right now all nine of you are the lessies for that parcel. If your. Your husband or the father, your children were to get a lot on Maui, would you guys all move over there or no?
No, I'd rather live here. But the dad, at the time, the dad did that for another reason, so we were just stuck succeeding. The spot of the Maui residential and if I can change it here, but then I'll go to the bottom of the list. I mean, there may be a chance that one of my kids might be able to live on the one in Maui, but nobody can qualify for the loan right now, only I can. So I asked them if can I pay for the loan and have my son living there, I said, no, the person with the loan needs to be in the home. And when they told me I needed to be there like by like this year in the home, I couldn't, that's too fast. And we already passed the lot selection already, we missed it.
Well, there's another, I believe, twenty four lots that are. You know, I mean, using either the habitat or owner builder approach, those haven't been awarded yet. And then there's also the Wa'iluku project right above, that's two hundred seven units. And on the street, the Wa'ahu Mauka, that's close to over three hundred. So there's a lot of potential lots, we are also doing the subsistence ag over there, Onakauai, so.
I really, really, really would like. Because we we like grow food and and live here. I I just got a job as a teacher at the Molokai Middle School, so. That's kind of set and I don't wanna, I wanna, you know, get back to my community here.
How big, how big is the lot you're on right now?
Thirty something, thirty something.
Okay, so this might be a prime example of where you might wanna subdivide and separate it out so you can actually. Maybe build a house on your portion or, you know, whatever. So maybe that's something that realistically, if you wanna stay here and. Maybe separate and kind of focus in on your expenses for the work and use of the water that you do. The suggestion that Glenn Tevis made about, you know, breaking up and these larger lots. Especially if you have, what, nine siblings? It's thirty five acres, so. Then all nine are here on Molokai or, yeah, so you got, what what then what is the number of committed living here of those nine?
There's like seven, seven different areas that is committed.
Seven, so five acre lots could do seven. So maybe we should take a look at that and work with you guys to see if we can do the subdivision and separate and you guys work among yourselves and guess what? And then maybe move forward on something like that, would that be something you'd be interested in?
That would be, but I just still, I still don't wanna lose out my husband's spot.
No, no, you still can do that and.
My kids can succeed him if something happened to him, then they can't succeed because we can't approve fifty three times.
That's why I'm strongly recommending that he really look at getting a paper lease now.
Is that possible?
Definitely, there's, like I said, there's a bunch of other projects that are coming down the pipe, we're gonna. No, no, your 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 husband is on Maui residential, right?
Yeah, but ag here on Ho'olehua. But we're really trying to move forward with getting a Ho'olehua ag lot because that's where we live now and my kids like farm and. To me, giving us one lot to me would be easier than subdividing our lot that we have now. Because we're number fourteen, we're so close, I don't like give up now.
No, but there's not nine of you and only seven serious.
No, we're number fourteen on the Ho'olehua ag list and I don't like lose out on that.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
That's that's for my kids, that's my husband's side. You know, if if I would rather just get our own and not even deal with my family because that's just a lot of people, if we subdivided, that might be different because we have our own. Bills, our own spot and that might be something too.
The the lot you're on is an ag ag land? And you're on the residential, Ho'olehua?
Um, no.
Well, I guess you can.
The residential for my dad then was Kalamaula, the original Kalamaula, but family moved back and kicked us out.
Sounds like you have a complicated situation there, so I don't know what the answer is, but we can explore different options.
Yeah, I just don't like lose out on the Ho'olehua ag list because we're number fourteen, we're so close, waited all these years and I don't want my kids to miss out on that.
Well, we are doing the scattered Ho'olehua lots.
Yeah, so how, like, when are those being awarded?
Those, I don't know what the date. Next year. Yeah, it's coming up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's not too bad, I hope that nothing happens within the year.
Well, we're gonna, you know, again, you know, it's where we're trying to get the leases out, paper leases, and then the construction follows. And but it also entails working with the recipient and figuring what they can qualify for and we've got some pretty good loan products and then.
On the Ho'olehua ag.
Uh, yeah, yeah. So. So just keep a price of, you know, the process and then maybe you can talk to. Colin in front of back there, he can give you the specific dates and when we're moving forward, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next person, Kanani Niipali. Oh, Kunani, excuse me, not Kanani, Kunani.
Aloha, everybody. I'd like to preface my testimony by saying that how I've written it is. a reflection of things that in my last seventy-five years and experiences that we've had on the history between the DHHL and its inception before that with the commissioners. So I want to begin by saying that it's also a lot of frustration as we've heard in some of the testimony, not only tonight, today, but I'm sure you've heard all over the islands. So it's not impersonal, but it needs to be said. I want to begin with my aloha to you, Mr. Chair, commissioners that are present here this morning. I am Kunani Nihipali and my kuipo, ipo are beneficiaries of the, of a Ho Le Hua homestead. Her tutu was Manase Makikau, who was an ally and close friend of Prince Kuhiyo and an original recipient of a Kalamaula homestead. My ohana descends from Kalau, displaced during the Kalau Papa era, resettled at Kainalu and later migrated to the Nochro of Oahu. Ipo and I, we've been active in community forums, government hearings, national and international gatherings, always on behalf of our people, our ivi, our aina and our trust. And today, guided by my kupuna, before testimony, I always ask myself, will they listen? And if I don't speak, have I missed my chance to share mana'o? Cultural protocol has taught me to ho alohe, to na na ike kumu and pa'akouaha. With respect and aloha, I ask to say. Last April, I gave testimony to this committee, testimony that was later censored in the official minutes as my words were edited down and my central points omitted. I spoke about Molokai's existing DHHL lots, residential agriculture and pastoral, and still that still lack basic infrastructure, water, roads, electricity, housing support and climate resilience. Instead of completing those overdue improvements, DHHL pursued land acquisitions elsewhere under Act Two Seven Nine, leaving Molokai out entirely. Molokai has the highest percentage of native Hawaiians per capita, over forty percent, represented four, four point six percent of the total of Maui County. That would equate, according to the mathematics there, to twenty-seven point six of the six hundred million dollars of the Act Two Seven Nine. Mr. Chair, you mentioned an alternative. So I still waiting for that alternative consultation and the transparency. Many have oohahla, as we've heard, waiting on a cycle of promises without action, hearing without results, strategies that silence community concerns. I've only been waiting ten and a half years for my ag water. This isn't just poor planning, but a pattern of censorship coercion, co-option and delay. I've served on the board of illegal agency group, the Native Hawaiian Advisory Council, co-founded and directed by Elizabeth P. Martin Nakia, who worked with lead counsel Bill Meheul on the landmark case Ka'i versus Drake. That case reaffirmed the fiduciary duty of the state and DHHL to act in the best interest of native Hawaiian beneficiaries. The Hawaii Supreme Court ruling made it clear. State trustees must avoid conflicts of interest and act with full accountability. That was a legal call for ethical governance, equity and independence. It was about human and native rights, any warning. Again, we are testifying to what you already know. Molokai deserves justice, equity, infrastructure and basic water access in twenty twenty-five. This is our land, our trust, our future. If not now, when? After one hundred and four years of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act, sixty-six years, the Statehood Act, thirty-two years later, the apology. There's been a lot of lies. No lie can live forever. Most of the people who need to hear the truth don't want it spoken to them. The time to pa'akouaha, ho manawanui, ho mali mali, while our lands, our rights and our futures are buried under bureaucracy is pau. Especially when our kamali'i and mo'opuna ask us, tutu, what did you do? This is time to speak up, be heard and ku'e. We've waited long enough. Hawaii is the capital of the world's invasive species with flora and fauna, endangered and extinct. Today, we are faced with another destructive invasive species, the CRB, the coconut rhinoceros beetle. Its presence is decimating all palm like La'au. Molokai has been spared so far. Niu is our tree of life, an overlooked source of food. Two and a half years ago, we started another beneficiary initiative, Niu Now Molokai, creating a new nursery at our Ho Le Hua homestead, gathering two hundred eighteen new seeds from Mahana Kapuaiva to Mapuleho. A year later, we now have five more uluniyo coconut groves on Molokai. I invite any of you to come and see what we've done. Kapuaiva is a valuable seed bank that was planted by our ali'i, Komehmera Fiff. It is DHHL kuliana to prevent its destruction by the CRB. The state's only answer is to use chemicals, which no longer makes new a reliable bank or food source. We are already, we've already started working on a proactive plan of CRB awareness with our new now project. But we need resources, fundings that can not only save Kapuaiva, Mapuleho, but the whole island of Molokai. There are hard costs and people who can help, but shouldn't be expected to be manawahi. In conclusion, commissioners, chair, you are our fiduciaries, you are the trustees. You have a kuliana and are legally and morally obligated to act in the best interest of the beneficiaries, to be prudent, loyal, honest, to put the interests of beneficiaries first. The Hawaiian Homes Commission Act was written to rehabilitate native Hawaiians, not just to justify extraction, delay or disregard through bureaucratic amendments or budget diversions. The nineteen ninety-three apology law of reconciliation began with recognition. What is, what follows is to take responsibility, implement reparation and continue restoration. That is what reconciliation truly means. So ho lomo makou, if we move together as one, all the pelikiya of the past can be reconciled and ho'opono to make things right. Otherwise, I ask plainly, if our protectors won't, who will? Ipo mai kai inna'ala hui kanakabau pau. May all our people prosper. Mahalo.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Mr.? Okay, thank you very much.
Mahalo.
Okay. Okay, the next testifier, Opu Lani Alpino. Oh, okay, uh, next. Um, who's next? Michelle A. Tankaio?
Oh, yeah, okay. Hello.
Hello.
You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Trying to, um, so you can see me.
Change it.
Okay, Derek, hi. Aloha.
Aloha.
So aloha, Chair and Commissioners. I'm here to discuss the four hundred plus acres of Lea Li'i Lahaina Maui. I wanted to provide you with information regarding housing for the Lahaina Fire Survivors. It's important to note the commissioners approved in October twenty twenty-three um, commission meeting, item E two to negotiate and execute the transfer. However, it was decided by the state that they wanted to pause and decided around December twenty twenty-three to assist with the housing of Lahaina fire members, waitlisters and residents of Lea Li'i Phase One A. Um, myself included was concerned about this move because can the state be trusted to make sure the transfer resumes? To sweeten the concerns, it was announced that the valuable infrastructure from both DHS and FEMA projects will be included a part of the transfer of the four hundred plus acres to DHHL, thus decreasing the wait time being on the waitlist by about seventeen years. March nineteen twenty twenty-four commission meeting at the Lahaina Civic Center, Andrew Choi and Deputy Deputy Director Joseph Campos of DHS, along with Officer Curtis Brown from FEMA, provided information on their projects to include infrastructure, housing and modular info to DHHL. So here's a list of what I found and there's probably more in the works. This information comes from news articles, social media, news stations, so it's readily available information. And this is regarding the housing of Lahaina Fire Survivors. Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement, Kako O Maui, a collaboration between state, county, HCF FEMA, American Red Cross, um, they built Ke'au Maluhia and Maui Lani, fifty modular units, Laiku on Lahaina Luna Road, sixty modular units, Kapalua Village, fifty temporary modular homes, Haleo La'i, previously Hagai, one hundred seventy-five guest units. Um, that is in Lipo Street Kihei. It's a part of the Hawaii Intern Housing Program, same program as Kalaiola. FEMA, in addition to Kilohana Project, FEMA is currently placing modular homes on homeowner properties in which homeowners can stay in these units while, while they rebuild their homes. Also, there are multiple modular units at the location where the old Ace Lahaina on One A Street and parking lot across from Maria Lanaquila Church in Lahaina. Maui Lan and Pine, two hundred temporary homes, state to build at an area known as Honoke'ana near Napili. Um, Ka'auulu or Kukai'a, two hundred units, which was in its early stage, I believe two structures were up when the fires circled around this project. It has since opened up, giving fire survivors priority. Now we have the rebuild of rentals. Okay, we have Ka'auulu or Kupu'ohi, looks like it will be the first to be rebuilt, eighty-nine multifamily units. Hale Maha'olu announces plan to redevelop its Lahaina Surf Property, expected to provide three hundred and four units and Front Street Apartments redeveloped its one hundred ninety-two units announced at an open house on January twenty-nine, two thousand and five. In addition, just drive around, homeowners are rebuilding on their lots. You can drive any road in Lahaina and you will see homeowners breaking ground and in different stages of their rebuild to complete a structure. It's a hopeful sight. So I come to you with this information because it's important to let you know that the Lahaina survivors are being taken care of by the state, county, FEMA and many financial programs. They're being made whole or in the process of being made whole. I agree with you, um, Chair, wholeheartedly during your interview with Hawaiian News Now. There's been an unfortunate uh, migration. There are more native Hawaiians on the continent than here in Hawaii and that's a sad fact that you're trying to reverse. So I ask Chair, as you say, you are making strides to reducing a long waitlist for homesteads. Please, please hold the state accountable to keeping its promise to transfer all four hundred plus acres of Lea Li'i, all of it, to decrease the waitlist and keep Hawaiians in Hawaii. Because when everyone goes back to their rebuilt homes and their property, back to their rebuilt rentals, then the four hundred plus acres should go back to being transferred to DHHL as promised. Announced in twenty twenty-two, HHFTC and DHHL to negotiate transfer and approved by commissioners to negotiate and execute transfer in October twenty-three. Let's not let waitlister bear the burdens of losing all four hundred plus acres of Lea Li'i. Let's continue to strive by making the tragedy of Lahaina whole again, especially for your beneficiaries on the waitlist. Mahalo. Any questions?
Uh, any questions, Miss Jones? Uh, thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, next testifier, Marian Kanani Kapuniai.
I don't see her chair, so let's go to people.
Okay, uh, next, Ke'kua Inomoto.
Aloha. Aloha, Mai Kako. Uh, to the Hawaiian Homes Commissioners and to all of our mayor Ho'opula'ula on Molokai. I am Ke'kua Inomoto advocating on behalf of Pa'upena Community Development, Inc. Pa'upena CDC has partnered with four other beneficiary entities to spearhead development of a housing farming community on the Pulehunui South, six hundred forty-six acre homelands tract in central Maui. This project manifests self-determination because it is beneficiary-driven and self-governance under the Pulehunui Hawaiian Homestead Association. In his March seventh State of the County address, Maui Mayor Richard Bisson said his twenty twenty-five priorities are kama'aina housing, health and wellness, and protecting cultural and natural resources. Pa'upena's Pulehunui South proposal to provide two hundred fifty-two acre subsistence farm lots addresses these priorities with affordable housing options, farming to grow fresh, healthful produce and reconnecting native Hawaiians with their agriculture-based culture and with the natural resource of aina that's designated prime agriculture. With the express support of Maui Housing Director Richard Mitchell, Pa'upena seeks a three hundred eighty-three thousand six hundred sixty-dollar line item in the county's fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget to cover the project design and feasibility studies by the G seventy Planning and Architectural Firm of Honololo. Also, Kapono A' Molitau, Director of the County Oivii Resources Department, serves as cultural advisor to the Pulehunui South Initiative. Meanwhile, Pa'upena awaits word from DHHL Land Management Division Acting Administrator Linda Chin on our November fourteen land use pre-application for the six hundred forty-six acre tract. This summer, Ms. Chin will discuss how to apply for non-homesteading land at DHHL during the Sovereign Council of Hawaiian Homestead Association's twenty twenty-five Hawaiian Homeland Sovereignty Conference. The event will unfold from June two to four at the Alamana Hotel. She will join Josh Green, DHHL's Director Colleen Watson and Deputy Director Katie Lambert and a myriad of their notable conference presenters at the podium. I invite you commissioners to attend the two and a half day event. To register, put Shaw Conference in one's search engine or email conference@hawaiianhomesteads.org or call eight oh eight three one two one zero zero one. That's three, three one two one zero zero one. I would like to take this opportunity to ho mahalo the commission and the department for three achievements. The recent assigning of undivided interest less status to seven hundred prospective couple of lessees. The March twenty-seven inaugural hosting of Maui beneficiary consultations on linear preference at Kuliana Lot Selections and also the April five awarding of ninety-one Pu Hona Homestead Awards on the Valley Isle. I am an ardent supporter of all Hawaiian homes waitlisters receiving undivided interest lessy status. Furthermore, I support linear preference at all lot selections beyond only Kuliana lot selections. And I endorse one overall waitlist by date of application to prevent beneficiaries from going to the bottom of a neighboring island list. Mahalo nunui for your consideration and ao Pulehunui South.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The, uh, the next testifier, Tina Shomo Gibson. Or Shomo Gibson.
Hello, I, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and my video's off? Is there a way to turn my, okay, great. Okay, and my video's off, is there a way to turn my, okay, great. Aloha, oh, hi. Aloha Chair and Commissioners. Um, I am here uh, on behalf, of course, of the residents of Waipole Courtyards. And as you know, this has been since January of last year. That residents have been advocating for information, for transparency, and for wanting to know, you know, what's gonna happen to their housing. Um, and so, a few weeks ago, um. You know, I just wanna, I just wanna set this stage that there's been a lot of misinformation. And it's been very, very confusing for residents. Um, as you know, there's a May seventh option to purchase deadline, right? In two weeks is the deadline for Hawaiian Homes to purchase this building. Um, eh, there was a vote taken in September, right? So the vote says right here that the closing date would be February third, twenty twenty twenty-five, subject to extension no later than May seventh. Uh, twenty twenty-five, if additional time is needed to secure the required financing for closing. So May seventh is two weeks away. And this commission has not extended this deadline, so this deadline is what the commission voted for in September. So, right now, residents are being interviewed by Interwest. Saying, hey, we would like to re-interview you because the relocation plan was denied by HUD. HUD looked at the Interwest plan and said, no, this plan is not sufficient. One point nine million dollars is not sufficient, we are saying no to your relocation plan. So of course, residents are like, oh my goodness, thank goodness HUD. Was listening to us and said no to this insufficient plan based on bad data. I mean, I would have been very relieved as well to know that I'm not being displaced to Big Island. I'm not being asked to move to Oahu when my family and job is on Kauai, so, you know. Residents felt extreme relief to know that their plan, um, that the Interwest plan, based on bad data, bad information, and bad analysis. Was denied by HUD. Um, and then now Interwest is re-interviewing residents, they have been scheduling interviews with residents all this week. And yet, there's two weeks before D H H L can no longer close this deal. So it's very confusing to have Interwest say, hey, can we interview you for your relocation? And yet, the closing deadline is May seventh. So, you know, I just think it's time for this confusion to be eliminated. Um, you know, on January eighth. Consultants for Interwest Group, Christian O'Connor said the one point nine million dollar number for relocation was approved by HUD. January eighth, in front of Kauai County Council members, on tape, he says one point nine million was approved by HUD. That was false, that was just not true, HUD did not approve that number. On March eighteenth. Martha Victoria, the Director of Relocation Services. She is the Director for Interwest Group, she tells the residents by email. The one point nine million dollar budget was found to be compliant with HUD. Not true. HUD, HUD sends us an email on March twenty-eighth, the Director of the Relocation, uh, Production Division at HUD wrote. Multifamily housing has declined the Waipole Courtyards' application for mortgage insurance. Due to various concerns, including the relocation plan. And quote HUD will not be involved in this project should it move forward. HUD said, no, this relocation plan is not sufficient. This proposal has a lot of problems. We are not approving the purchase of Waipole as currently proposed. Great, so now my question is, why is Interwest Group interviewing residents for their relocation? And I just would like this commission to please get answers from Interwest Group. If D H H L is not buying this building in two weeks by May seventh, uh, people wanna know. People literally have lives hanging on the line and they want to know. If I was living someplace with a purchase deadline in two weeks, I would wanna know, is this purchase happening or not? And I think it's a very fair question, and Interwest Group is not answering this question, the only answers we are getting are from HUD. I don't know where, what, what is going on, it's very confusing. So if somebody from this commission could please answer, is D H H L purchasing this building by May seventh? That would be, I think, very helpful for residents to know, for everybody to know. Thank you, and 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 so I, I'm asking that.
Is, is she there? Okay, let's see, the next person, Lourdes Torres.
The host, um, hello?
One second, one second.
Sure. I can't tell if I'm on, am I?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Aloha Chair Watson and Commissioners. I'd like to share some concerns I have about the D H H L's plan to acquire Waipole Courtyards rental apartments. Displacing three hundred residents, I'm one of them. And I'm here on behalf of myself and other residents at Waipole that couldn't be here, and they. Have been advocating and signing petitions seeking timely information, which has been. A little slow sometimes, and so they can't make it here, but I'm here on their behalf. Um, a few weeks ago, we were notified by HUD. That they rejected the relocation plan created by Interwest. And they added that HUD would not be a part of the D H L's proposal moving forward. And so, after learning that, um, the residents got together and created a letter. That you have in your packet, I have it here now, it's just a small paragraph, so I'd just like to read it quickly if I may. It dated, uh, April eleven, and. It starts with, we the undersigned, undersigned, and residents of the courtyards at Waipole and Kapakahawai. We wanna thank the Hawaiian Homes Commission for providing us the opportunity to share our concerns. About the relocation plan, especially the Kauai Commissioner Dennis Neves. For asking questions and raising concerns about Kauai beneficiary interests. In an apartment complex that mostly is one or two bedroom units with limited parking stalls. We appreciate giving the opportunity to speak, and we do hope that that twenty-five million in the Hasta Fund can go. Towards helping beneficiaries secure leasehold then. So after that, um, letter was sent out. We got a notice from, and this is the uh, update, I just wanna share this update. We got a notice from Interwest Group inviting us to another round of interviews. And, um. I am assuming that is to fix the relocation plan, which was entirely insufficient and based on statewide rental prices. Plus relocating most of us off-island. So they've invited us to do that, and we're concerned, that brings us to these three concerns, and then I'll let you go. Um. Here's the concerns, right, after drafting the, the letter, we realized that we need an updated relocation plan. And be given the appropriate time to review it and comments as we did before. And then, uh, we, the plan should include open and transparent communication in terms of the data and method used to create the relocation budget. So data and method, right, that's super important because it affects us personally tremendously. And then the last thing is, is there going to be a vote to extend the deadline past May seventh? And could we be notified of that, please? Um, so far, yeah. You know, we sometimes worry about communication, but we trust that because the deadline is two weeks from now, right, May seventh. Um, where this purchase is gonna close, that maybe now we could get some idea what's gonna happen, because this is gonna start happening very quickly. Thank you, Commissioner.
If, thank you very much.
Aloha.
Okay, the next, uh, testifier. Chasten Hasigawa. Uh, Chasten Hasigawa. Okay, the next testifier Cindy Freitas regarding Kauai High Concerns.
Chair, can I, can I make a comment on the?
Commissioner Neves?
Yeah, I just, uh, just for the, the commission's, uh, information. This letter that the last testifier was talking about, I haven't received, so I can't comment on it. But I think, uh, I think we're all, uh, aware of the, the issues they're having, and I think this is the right venue. I'm not sure what the department's doing, how we're moving forward, but I just wanna make that statement. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, Cindy Freitas?
Yes, um, can I share screen?
You can.
Yes, you can.
Where is it? Oh, hold on. That will lay it on me on. Is it on? I, I don't see it.
On the bottom. It's on. On the bottom of the screen, the, the up arrow that is in the green box, click on that.
I know, I see, okay. Oh, I got it. Emele komo a gemele aloha, nona kupuna i ka'au'i hala, aloha mai kako. My name is Cindy Freitas, I am, um. I was, I'm a native Hawaiian descendant prior to seventeen seventy-eight. I was born and raised in Awa'i, and I'm also a culture practitioner who practice. The customary practices from my, I was taught by my grandparents at a young age from Ma'oka to Makai in many different areas. So my issue is not quite high, it's supposed to be like Yopua. So this, this, um. My issue is about water credit. But before I get to water credit, this ten vacant lots right here for the future offer. Is the question, when is it gonna be open? That would be here, from my understanding from a couple years ago, would be here. Here. And here. Total of ten vacant lots in villages five at La'opua. But we don't know when it's gonna be given out, number one. I'm sixty-two, I applied in eighty-two. I voiced for nineteen ninety-five, from that year on for vacant lot, and never gave a vacant, never received one till today. I'm sixty-four, I don't want myself dying before I get one, please. Break that monotonous. So, I'm wondering about this ten acres, because I wanna do Nahasa. And I can't do nothing if I don't have it. At this point, and they have plenty money for people like us, who comes in the sixty and eighty medium bracket at this point. So I know I'm qualified, but I scared to start the process if I gotta wait. Another twenty years. My lease was given to me in two thousand and five, a promise that we will have villages. Ha, I was looking for villages for Emma. But at this point, it didn't happen. Twelve years later, this happened, Village Five. Now Village Four is twenty years, as a twenty twenty-five, that is unacceptable. They told me there's no water credits. You see this consultant? We had one meeting on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, Lily was the facilitator. Boka Honey wanted one preschool here. In that meeting, Boka Honey tells us he got thirty-six water credits on this two point one acre lot. My question is to the commissioner, are you guys hiding the credit just to build this forty-five rent to purchase lots? That's the impression I'm getting, e kalamai yau. But I am so frustrated. With this department for hiding things, for moving things, and making us think there's nothing. I'll give you a good example. Ahuna versus Department of Hawaiian Homelands in nineteen eighty-two. The Supreme Court held that D H H L and the Hawaiian Homes Commission breached their fiduciary duties. By prioritizing state and county interests over those of native Hawaiian beneficiary. Again, Kalima versus State of Hawaii from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand twenty-two. Decades ago, for not giving out leases, breached their fiduciary duty. Kanahale versus State of Hawaii, two thousand twenty-four, the Monarcher Axis Road. There was no compensation, nor was there no consultation with the native Hawaiian to have the DOT take our road. When we stood up there for the Monarcher Movement. Seven thousand beneficiaries stood on that road, we are the rightful holders. So I asked the commissioner. About this vacant lot, you guys never gave vacant lots out in history for La'opua. La'opua Phase one, two, and three was built in twenty twenty twenty, if, two thousand, actually, if I'm not mistaken. And it's been decades. When is this vacant lot coming out? I am not getting any younger. My lease is over, over twenty years since I got that lease. And I have, I think I have waited more than patiently. More than, many commissioners ago, I talked to them about this, and I'm talking to you and pleading with you guys. To give out that ten vacant lots and take that thirty-six. Water credits that is stashed here on this lot and give it to us. Because I get one feeling you taking that thirty-six water credits and giving them to this developer. So please, give us that water credit so we can build and move ahead. So I will not be another statistic on your list. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, let's see, the next Cindy Freitas. Oh, that is Cindy, oh, thank you Cindy, uh, the next one is Jojo Tanimoto.
Good morning, everybody, is it still morning? Can you hear me? Did you hear me? Thank you, Chair, thank you Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to share, uh, my concerns. I have a few that I'd like some help with. And that is number one, permission to access the area for a fire, uh, evacuation road. What we need is a site visit, I've consistently asked, and as far as for staff, I don't get a. I don't get, uh, communication. But what's happening now is now that the county is, the mayor has done a can-do initiative. So there is some funding on the county side to work with Hawaiian Homes to do this evacuation road. And I'm hoping that the department and the commission will. Start this project that's been long overdue. And so I'm asking the commission to refer me, Chair, refer me to somebody that we can work with. I mean, it's been a few years and I've consistently asked, and so now I'd like to be referred to somebody if you will help out. Um, because the county is now on board, and before they figure out another big project. This would be one that would help the beneficiaries. The other one that I wanna talk to is, um, the watershed erosion. It is affecting the water quality in the. It is affecting the water quality in the marine area. And Kauai High was the place, the, the whole habitat, they call that koa, uh, the habitat for fishes. But now it is getting polluted from erosion. Most of it from the homestead areas. And we would like some help. It's the, the outside communities that are beginning to jump on board and complain the department's not doing enough. And so we'd like to work with the department. And so I'm asking for the commission and the Chair to refer us to somebody that we could start working with. And I mean the, the whole South Kohala District from Hawaiian Homes out to Waikoloa. Because there was a lot of development coming up in the South Kohala District. Including the, uh, somebody had asked this morning about finding out about the water inventory on the island of Hawaii. Well, we got the South Kohala Community Development Program under the County Planning Department to do exactly that. And so working with that, we're finding out it's affecting the streets as well. So we'd like to be referred to somebody to work with. And my last one would also, no, no, it's not the last one. Uh, the other one would be the goats in the whole South Kohala area. And Kauai High Homestead does have a program, but it's not working well. And so we'd like to find out who you could refer us to in Hawaiian Homes to fix this problem. Because we had a site visit with the State Department of Transportation to go through the whole Kauai High area to find out the problems that we have with the state and we come across goats. Lots of them. So, and it's supposedly offense in Hawaiian homes. So where did all these goats come from? And they are affecting the school buses because the bus drops the kids off, but they gotta walk up the highway to go home in Kailapa. Different subdivision on the highway. And you got all these goats. Anyway, we'd like somebody to help us out and fix this problem. The last is, uh, Hawaiian Homes had, I mean, the beneficiaries had a meeting with the planning department. And then the maps that were presented at the Hawaii Island Plan Meeting did not indicate any historic sites or any of the, um, areas that would affect all of the environmental uh, in Kauai High. So now we have the harbor that's expanding. We have the, the bridges, uh, that are falling. We have all kinds of floods, but they're not indicated on the island plan. So I would like to ask especially that the historic sites be indicated on the maps. Because this is the land of Kameha Meha. And he came with all these people to do the Pu'u Kohola, K'ao. And they also have all of the, uh, events to try to help Hawaiians uh, understand history, especially for the beneficiaries. Putting the beneficiaries are being, let's see, there's no access to go visit and learn about these areas on Hawaiian Homelands. And I'd like to be referred to somebody as well. Because the Na'alahili Trails People under Division of Forestry at DLNR is now looking into, uh, the trail portion. And we also have the County Resource Commission looking at historic sites, um, which is not indicated. So before it doesn't get, you know, indicated, we'd like some help with that. And so Chair, Commissioners, I ask your help to refer us to people so that we can work together finally. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jojo. Let's see, uh, let's see, the next testifier, Robin Kiliinoho Moku.
Oh, when do I find out who you're gonna refer me to and how are you gonna do that?
Uh, we'll get back to you, Jojo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Robin?
Aloha, everyone.
Aloha.
I believe that, um, Michael has my PowerPoint. If we could start with the PowerPoint, please?
Yeah, we, we can see it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, aloha, Kakahiaka Commissioners. My name is Robin Leguanani Kiliinohomoku. And today I would like to accomplish two things. One is to give an update on the Pulehunui Hawaiian Homestead Association in which I'll share a PowerPoint, um, that I prepared and to also follow up and get an update on a contested case hearing on an applicant waitlist spot for my uncle Thomas Kamuela Kiliinohomoku, of whom I am a qualified lineal descendant. Um, I, I can't see the, um, this PowerPoint. Okay, there we go. Great.
Yeah.
Um, wonderful. This is Pulehunui Hawaiian Homestead. Um, we're looking actually at Monica Halevi on Maui. Next. Our mission for Pulehunui Hawaiian Homestead is to educate, empower, and engage Hawaiian homeland beneficiaries through farming, ranching, and economic activities that foster native Hawaiian sovereignty. Um, in other words, self-determination and self-governance in a culturally appropriate community-based way. Next. For those who have not seen or know where Pulehunui is on Maui, it is located along Maui Veterans Highway. It's six hundred and forty-six acres specifically for the Pulehunui South. Um, it's the larger parcel that you see here on this PowerPoint. Next. This is a, um, land use request that was submitted back on November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and it's ninety days past the threshold, um, that is required for any type of questions or concerns that the Commissioners may have. And in our latest, uh, email from Shelley, um, it's approximately now two weeks since she responded that she would have an update for us and we are still waiting. Um, we'd like to, uh, request for a long-term land use request. Um, and we're hoping to hear back, um, from someone as soon as possible. And, and, and the reason for, and we'll share in the, in the, um, PowerPoint, um, as to, and as you folks already know, um, a lot of the activities that are going on, um, there on that property. Next. Next. Oh, it looks like it's missing a photo. Um, maybe if you press next, it might slide in. The photo that now that we see is, um, is a site visit that we had at Pulehunui South with Commissioner Archie Kalepa. That was on March twenty-first. Um, and it was a great, a great site visit because we got to actually see, um, live of some of the activities that, um, were happening there on property. And we wanna, uh, we wanna mahalo, Commissioner, for, um, coming with us and, and, um, being able to take a look at what is on the property, what's going on on the property, some of the challenges that, um, that we're facing and what we're seeing there daily, um, at the six hundred forty-six acre property. Next. Next. Here on that, at that visit, we were able to take a tour, of course, and, um, again, uh, noticing, you know, I think in our previous, uh, presentation, we, I think we were able to, um, note that there are approximately twenty-four plus derelict vehicles. But as we, um, toured this particular day with, with Commissioner, um, there looked to be much, many, many more, um, on another part of the property, um, amounting to at least forty-plus derelict vehicles, um, that are scattered and, um, and since um, February to this particular visit, there has been more cars being brought onto the property due to, um, the easy access and there's no lock on the gate. And that I shared last, um, last month's and last month's, um, hearing. So just as FYI that we need to get, um, a lot put on that gate because there isn't any at this time. Next. Next. Okay, thank you. Again, um, all of the abandoned vehicles that you folks are seeing, some that are, have been there for a while. And then some that are fairly new, new additions to what is on that property. And as you can see, it's, there's all kinds of stuff going on. So imagine, um, and Commissioner, um, Archie Kalepa, if you wanna say anything to this, um, is this the activities, um, besides just seeing these abandoned vehicles, but actually live people, um, living there? Um, it's really a sight to see. Next. So, um, here we are noticing, um, in that far right picture, uh, it looks to be, um, appliances um, that are being dumped there. But in the very top center picture, this is a new, um, some new green, green waste dumping that's happening right off the highway. So you can see the cars that are passing up above. And, um, there's numerous piles of green waste being dumped onto the property. And it's a concern because we know that it's, we're coming into, um, the summer months and now you can see that, um, what used to be green is now turning brown. So, um, fire is always a concern, um, all across Maui, but especially in our drier areas and, um, and no water to help, um, in case of a fire. Next. Um, on this particular day when we visited with Commissioner, when we also, uh, noticed, um, a large clearing, um, land clearing that was not there back in February. Um, and the land clearing is approximately a hundred yards from the bare property line. And, um, is it the department that's clearing all of this or is there an MOA? Um, with someone that is, has been, um, given permission to clear this area? But it's a very, very large piece. Um, the, the slide on the left, um, is the backside um, of the photo that I took going back, going back at least, hmm, uh, maybe a few acres. And then the, the photo on the right is, is going out towards the ocean. So it's a large, large area that was not like that, um, a month ago or two months ago in February. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, um, of this clearing that is happening on, um, on what I, what seems to be, um, Department of Hawaiian Homelands, which leads me to my next thing is that, uh, I would like to request for pins to demarcate the property boundaries. And that request has been sent to Shelley and, um, it would be beneficial for all of us to, to know um, where the property boundaries are, um, and if, in case this clearing is happening within our property. Yeah, within our property. Okay, next. I think this might be my last slide. Um, Pulehunui Hawaiian Homes Association, uh, was present at our Prince John Akuhio Kalaniano Ole Birthday Celebration on March twenty-second and, um, in partnership with UH Manoa Sitar, College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources. We, um, were able to do some hydroponic demonstrations, which is some of the activities that we'll be starting to do in the next few months. Um, more agricultural activities for our beneficiaries. Um, and we also had a really fun, kiki bean planting activity. So we had a really busy booth and the kikis kept coming back wanting to do their own, um, little potting activity and, um, I think we had at least, um, we had several people, many people, um, stopped by, um, at the booth, but we had, I wanna say at least ten kiki, um, come by and, and plant their little, um, beans. So that was a fun, was a fun day. It was fun just getting to know, um, our beneficiaries and their kiki. Next. You can follow us on Instagram at Pulehunui underscore HHA. You can also email us. Um, and, or you can also scan this QR code. It'll take you to, um, an online Google farm and you can fill out the information there too, so that we can reach out to whoever's interested, um, in becoming a farmer, uh, with our workshops that we have coming up in the next, uh, few months or for the next few months. Also, um, the entrepreneurship opportunities that we are, um, combining as a component to, um, assist our farmers with direct-to-consumer, um, um, types of, um, retail for their products and helping to support food sovereignty and food sustainability. And I think that's it for today. Um, I'll end with, um, heli'i ka'aina, hekaua kekanaka. And we always continue to know that land is chief and we are its servants. And mahalo nui, mahalo nui to all the Commissioners. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions. Um, Commissioner Kalepa, did you wanna, uh, speak to this? Or have any input?
Yeah, I did. Uh, I, I just wanted to say, Robin, thank you and, um, your team for taking me on a tour and seeing, um, what's going on over there. And, um, you know, it's kind of an eye-opener. It wa, it wasn't, um, cars, but the fact that people were actually living in the bunkers.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and seeing, I was talking to Dave about it and some of the weapons that I saw in the bunker. It was really concerning and the safety of, um, of that place. And I do know that there's, there needs to be a gate or something that's put in so that nobody continues to dump, uh, rubbish over there. I don't know how that can happen. But I appreciate you guys' continued effort and keep, um, pushing to uh, utilize these lands for farming. So just keep up the work. Support. I support you guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see, uh, the last testifier, Marian Kanani Kapunei.
She's having a hard time getting on, so. That's okay. Okay.
Okay, uh, we've come to the end of our agenda. Uh, I'd like to mahalo, uh, everybody that participated, including the Commissioners. As I said, uh, you know, I always appreciate you guys' input and willingness to serve. Uh, next month's regular meeting is scheduled for May nineteenth and twentieth. And it's gonna be at the Sheridan Kauai, uh, Poipu Barroom and starts at nine-thirty AM. The DHHL Community Meeting, uh, will be at LALA Elementary School Camp there at, uh, six-thirty PM. And again, uh, mahalo for everybody attending. We are adjourned. And again, uh mahalo for everybody attending. We are adjourned.